Thank you and good morning to everyone. We're gonna get started now. But before we begin the council session today, I would like to make the following announcement. Due to the continuing threat to public health from COVID-19, City Council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notices that was published in the Daily News Inquirer and Legal Intelligence prior to the meeting and can also be found on PHL Council. A note that the hours come. Clerk will please call the roll to take attendance and members that are in attendance to say a word or two to make sure that your emphasis is displayed on the screen. Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues in the city of Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Good morning, Council President and colleagues in the city of Philadelphia. I'm present.
Good morning.
Councilman Dom?
Morning, Council President, colleagues, and the city of Philadelphia, present.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gartier?
Sorry, good morning, Council President, colleagues in Philadelphia, present.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Good morning, Council President, good morning colleagues, and good morning to the city of sisterly love. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Green?
Good morning, Council President, good morning colleagues, good morning to the viewing public. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Good morning, Council President, good morning colleagues, I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Johnson?
Good morning, Council President, good morning colleagues. Just sending out prayers to all the families as lost loved ones to sense this compassion. Good to see everyone as well.
Good morning.
Councilman Jones?
Mr. President, colleagues, Philadelphia, I am present and good morning.
Good morning.
Councilman O?
Morning, Council President, good morning colleagues, I'm present as well.
Good morning.
Councilman O'Neil?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Parker?
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ginona Sanchez?
Good morning, Council President, good morning colleagues, I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Squilla?
Good morning, Council President and colleagues, present.
Good morning.
Councilman Thomas? Council President Clark?
And good morning to all. We've established our quorum and we're gonna get started. So to give our invocation this morning-
Morning, Council President, good morning colleagues, I'm present. I hope you can hear me.
Yes, we have. Thank you, Councilman. Um, we have our quorum, so we're gonna get started. But to give our invocation this morning, the chair recognizes Minister Anastasia Marie Austin of Mount Carmel Baptist Church. She is here today as a guest of Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson. I would ask all members and guests to please bow your heads for the invocation.
Greetings, President Clark and the members of the Philadelphia City Council. Thank you, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson, as I am humbled and honored by your invitation. This is indeed the day that the Lord has made, and despite all trials and tribulations facing our city, we will rejoice and be glad in it. Give thanks to the Lord, for he is good and his faithful love endures forever. Dear Heavenly Father, the Creator and Sustainer of all things, thank you for your many blessings. Thank you for the ability to be involved in life-changing work. Thank you for the ability to spread love, joy, peace, goodness, and faithfulness to those we encounter. Thank you for another opportunity to gather in this place to carry out the task assigned to each individual. For every member of this council is on a divine assignment and have been called to be the leaders of this city working on behalf of your children. You, oh God, have entrusted them to make the difficult decisions, to work collaboratively with one another, to strategically plan for the improvement of Philadelphia, and to attend to the concerns of their constituents. And so as they work, remind them to do nothing out of selfish ambition, but rather in humility, valuing others above themselves. Remind them, Lord, that to whom much is given, much will be required. Grant them the wisdom needed to address the issues of gun violence, food insecurities, educational funding, environmental pollution, adequate pay for work, and various humanitarian crises plaguing our city. Lord, strengthen the members of City Council. They wear many hats, and at times the weight of it all can be too heavy to carry. So in those times when the pressures of life tries to paralyze them, Lord, renew their strength and replenish their soul. Fill them with your supernatural power to overcome each and every obstacle in their path. Remind them that each and every day brings new mercies. As I bring this prayer to a close, Lord bless our city. We are called the city of brotherly love and sisterly affection, so help us to love one another just as Christ loved us. We are the birthplace of the United States, so help us to be united as we birth new vision, new dreams, and new purpose. We are the home of the Rocky statue, so help us to fight for what is right. We stand on the land which was once inhabited by the Lenape tribe, so help us to stand in peace. Thank you once again for hearing our prayer and blessing this gathering of your people. In Jesus's name I do pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Minister, for your spiritual guidance this morning. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we need it. Thank you, Minister. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 12th, 2022. The chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 12th, 2022 be approved.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 12th, 2022 stand and approve all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and our journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Thank you. The chair thanks to Councilwoman. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker for motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session. Councilwoman Parker?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to this session of council and as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments on bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, resolution taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with a notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
First one.
Second.
Can I get a second? And if someone needs to make sure-
Second.
I heard you, Councilman. I just wanna make sure somebody's not on mute. This should be on mute. Thank you. It's been moved in properly second that the legislative matters stated by Councilwoman Parker may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of this session. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, ayes have it, and motion carries. And our next order of business is communication. The clerk will please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications that he may have in his possession.
From the mayor to the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on May 18, 2022, I signed the remaining bills which were passed by council at its session on May 5, 2022. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body. A resolution adopting the 2022 Hazard Mitigation Plan as the official Hazard Mitigation Plan of the city of Philadelphia. And a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority. Ds conveying fee simple title of the city on lots of pieces of ground with buildings and improvements Iran situated in the fifth council manic district. And a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority. Ds conveying fee simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements Iran situated in the seventh council manic district. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Market Street Extended, the Delaware River, Dock Street Extended, and Second Street in order to facilitate development of public open space extending above Christopher Columbus Boulevard and the Delaware Expressway. And an ordinance authorizing the Public Property Commissioner on behalf of the city to execute all documents necessary and appropriate, including conveyances and easements, title, and other interests in city-owned real estate, new leases and amendments to existing leases to facilitate and support the coordinated and comprehensive development of the Delaware River waterfront, Interstate 95 and Christopher Columbus Boulevard, formerly a portion of Delaware Avenue, in the area bounded by Market Street, Pemberton Street, Front Street, and the Delaware River Bulk Head Line. And authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute corresponding conveyances, amendments, and agreements, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. And by way of a reminder, we're asking that all resolutions, including privileged resolutions, be placed on the final passes calendar for our next session of council unless they are being referred to committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide an appropriate opportunity for public comment. Uh, thank you very much in advance for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, please read the titles of the legislations that's being offered by our members today.
Councilwoman Parker offers three bills and three resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark and ordinance amending chapter 2500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Council manic districts by revising the approximate population in each of the council manic districts to include state and county prisoner data.
Further committee?
On her own behalf, Councilwoman Parker offers two bills entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land within an area bounded by Cotman Avenue, Oxford Avenue, Tyson Avenue, Rising Sun Avenue, Glenview Street, Bingham Street, Kerper Street, Rising Sun Avenue, Unruh Avenue, Martins Mill Road, city boundary, and Hasbrook Avenue.
Further committee?
And an ordinance amending title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising certain provisions of section 14520 entitled NDO, Ninth District Overlay District.
Further committee?
And on behalf of Council President Clark, Councilwoman Parker offers three resolutions. Entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2553 North Carlisle Street located in the fifth council manic district.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority. Ds conveying fee simple title two, one Garrison Court, 1221 Ridge Avenue, 1227 Ridge Avenue, 1253 North 30th Street, 1257 North 30th Street, 1265 North Dover Street, 1271 North Dover Street, 1301 North Dover Street, 1304 North 29th Street, 1304 North Dover Street, 1318 North Dover Street, 1322 North Dover Street, and 1324 North Myrtlewood Street.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority. Ds conveying fee simple title to 1446 North Dover Street, 1446 North Newkirk Street, 1629 North Marston Street, and 1631 North Bailey Street in the fifth council manic district.
Next week's calendar?
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers on behalf of Council President Clark a resolution adopting the 2022 Hazard Mitigation Plan as the official Hazard Mitigation Plan of the city of Philadelphia. Mr. President, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson would like to be recognized for a motion on this resolution.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, I move for a suspension of the rules for consideration of this resolution during today's session of council.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you. Thank you. It's moving properly second that you will the council be suspended so as to allow reading of this resolution on today's calendar. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. That will be on today's final passes calendar.
Councilwoman Gimm offers one resolution celebrating Philadelphia's breakthrough Grammy-nominated experimental pop band Japanese Breakfast for its pioneering sound and recent critical acclaim and recognizing the band's frontwoman, Michelle Zoner. A powerful voice for the AAPI women and Korean-Americans whose bestselling memoir, Crying in H Mart, a tribute to her late mother and the Korean food and culture that bound their love, has moved countless readers across the globe.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman Jones offers two resolutions. Entitled a resolution also naming the 5700 block of Windell Avenue as Lady B Way in honor of Lady B to memorialize her legacy as a pioneer of hip-hop and an award-winning radio personality.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution also naming the 6100 block of Vine Street as Mimi Brown Way in honor of Mimi Brown, a well-known on-air personality and a trailblazer in the radio industry for over forty years.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman Johnson offers two resolutions. Entitled a resolution celebrating June as Reentry Awareness Month in Philadelphia and recognizing the accomplishments of returning citizens across Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution also naming 15th Street between Lombard and South Wesley Way to honor the historic Wesley AME Zion Church.
Next week's calendar?
Councilwoman Sanchez offers one resolution. Entitled a resolution recognizing the month of June as Immigrant Heritage Month and Caribbean-American Heritage Month in the city of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman Green offers two bills and three resolutions. Entitled an ordinance amending title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by providing for a limited expansion of single-room residence.
Further committee?
And an ordinance amending title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning to provide for a height allowance for certain solar collectors.
Further committee?
And a resolution recognizing the Philadelphia Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated on the occasion of its one-hundredth anniversary.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution recognizing May 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution recognizing men's fit on the occasion of their fifteenth anniversary celebration and expressing gratitude for their service to the men of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman Dom offers one resolution. Entitled a resolution honoring American sports writer, author, screenwriter, radio personality, and sports commentator Ray Dinninger on the announcement of his retirement from NBC Sports Philadelphia and 94.1 WIP Sports Radio and congratulating him on an exciting and legendary career serving as a Philadelphia sports media icon for fifty-three years.
Next week's calendar?
Councilwoman Gartier offers four bills. Entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 39th Street, Ludlow Street, 40th Street, and Market Street to amend other rules relating to zoning and approving a master plan for the site bounded by the aforementioned area and making related changes to various provisions of title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning.
Further committee?
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Woodland Avenue, 49th Street, Graves Avenue, and 54th Street.
Further committee?
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Art Street, 50th Street, Pine Street, and 54th Street.
Further committee?
And an ordinance amending section 14513 of the Philadelphia Code entitled TOD, Transit Oriented Development Overlay District to designate additional transit-oriented development transit stations.
Further committee?
Councilman Thomas offers on behalf of Council President Clark and ordinance amending section 12701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Designation of Bicycle Lanes to authorize a bicycle lane on West Market Street from 20th Street to 23rd Street and making associated changes to travel lanes and parking regulations within the same limits.
Further committee?
Councilman O'Neil offers two bills. Entitled an ordinance authorizing the vacating of Cruzdown Road from Norwalk Road to its terminus southwesterly therefrom.
Further committee?
And an ordinance amending section 191301.1 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Homestead Exclusion to increase the amount of the homestead exclusion.
Further committee?
Councilman Squilla offers three bills. Entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Market Street Extended, the Delaware River, Dock Street Extended, and Second Street in order to facilitate development of public open space extending above Christopher Columbus Boulevard and the Delaware Expressway.
Further committee?
And an ordinance authorizing the Public Property Commissioner on behalf of the city to execute all documents necessary and appropriate, including conveyances, easements, title, and other interests in city-owned real estate, new leases and amendments to existing leases to facilitate and support the coordinated and comprehensive development of the Delaware River waterfront.
Further committee?
And an ordinance amending title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning to amend certain provisions of chapter 14500 entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by amending the provisions of section 14527 entitled SMH South Philadelphia Municipal Hub Overlay District.
Further committee?
Councilwoman Bass offers one bill and three resolutions. Entitled an ordinance authorizing the provision of lines of grades in a portion of city plan number 284 by relocating the northwesterly House Line and the curb lines of Hillcrest Avenue from its current intersection with Germantown Avenue to a point northeastally therefrom, thereby widening the said portion of Hillcrest Avenue and modifying the intersection with said Germantown Avenue.
Further committee?
And on behalf of Council President Clark, a resolution approving the rebuild project statement for fiscal years 2020, 2021, 2022, and 2023 pursuant to bill number 170206.
Next week's calendar?
And on her own behalf, two resolutions. Entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 5026 North 7th Street located in the eighth council manic district.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution renaming the 1700 block of Hunting Park Avenue in front of Simon Gratz High School, Rashid Wallace Road, to honor Rashid Wallace, a philanthropist, former NBA player, and entrepreneur.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman O offers two resolutions. Entitled a resolution requesting the National Constitution Center give consideration to awarding the Philadelphia Liberty Medal to Vladimir Zelensky, President of Ukraine, for his courageous leadership in defense of democracy, freedom, and self-determination.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution recognizing and celebrating the 2022 Philippine Independence Week celebration from June 4th to June 18th.
Next week's calendar?
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes the introduction of bills and resolutions. And our next order of business is reports from committees. And the chair recognizes Councilman Green for report on the committee on finance.
Thank you, Council President. The committee on finance reports out three bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Please read that report.
To the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, the committee on finance, which was referred bill number 220168 entitled an ordinance amending section 2305 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Office of Property Assessment, Chief Assessment Officers, Powers and Duties, by further providing with respect to the manner in which assessments are determined for certain properties that are subject to resale restrictions and by providing for additional reporting requirements with respect to such properties. And bill number 220220 entitled an ordinance amending title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance, Taxes, and Collections by adding a new chapter, 194500 entitled Annual Reporting Relating to Unclaimed Property. And bill number 220359 entitled an ordinance authorizing the city of Philadelphia to enter into a guaranteed energy savings contract for the evaluation and implementation of energy conservation and efficiency measures designed to reduce energy or other measurable consumption or operating costs of the city's municipal street lighting system. Respectfully reports that is considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bill numbers 220168, 220220, and 220359.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 220168, 220220, and 220359. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. And that concludes our reports from committee and our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that the bill just reported from committee with the suspension after rules have been named or have had a first reading. Uh, it will be on a second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are numbers 220422, 220426, 220427, 220428, 220429, 220430, 220431, 220432, 220433, 220434, 220435, 210685AA, and 210802. All other resolutions and bills are being held, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. We normally would move to our public comment, uh, but we do not have any speakers on public comment today. Uh, but for purposes of, um, information, um, with respect to our process, uh, do have to, uh, mention a number of matters. Um, just talk about public comment. Uh, it must concern matters of the second reading and final passes calendar for possible action at a session of council. And a speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call 215-686-3406 by 3:00 PM the day before the session to sign up for public comment. When you call, we will take your name, your phone number, the number of the legislative item that you are commenting on, and whether you are in support of or against the legislation and add your name to the list. We will then telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting. Under ideal circumstances, uh, you will have three minutes to speak. But from time to time, depending on the volume, it may be adjusted to reflect, uh, our ability to have everyone have an opportunity to speak. Um, so I just wanted to let you know, today we have no public comment. And we will move on to consider the bills and resolutions on our second reading and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, would you please read the title of resolution number 220422?
A resolution urging the school district of Philadelphia to enhance its maternity leave program.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass for a motion. Councilwoman Bass?
Thank you, Mr. President. My apologies. Uh, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is approved. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number 220426.
A resolution honoring twelve of Philadelphia's emerging Asian-American leaders. Lan Din, Cheezer Tron, Neo McHeja, Dr. Esther Yotang Castillo, Stephanie Sun, Anne Oshie, Jenny Nam, Shreemum Sak, Sinthu Storms, Tlam, Sheila Madali, and Mai Weintraub for their deep commitment to empowering their communities and their work in fighting for food sovereignty, dismantling barriers in social services, expanding economic opportunity and justice, investing in community-based arts, advancing representation in sports, and protecting civil rights on the occasion of Asian-American and Pacific Islander History Month.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President. Last week I had the chance to honor twelve trailblazers here in the city of Philadelphia. This week we are honoring twelve emerging leaders who represent the breadth, diversity, and commitment of Asian-Americans in Philadelphia to build a better city and help lead it too. Um, and with that, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number 220427.
Resolution honoring Philadelphia-born author, podcaster, cultural critic, media trailblazer, and Peabody Award winner Phil Yu, founder of Angry Asian Man, a destination website on Asian-American pop culture, politics, sports, and more, and co-author of the New York Times bestseller Rise: A Pop History of Asian America from the Nineties to Now.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President. I would like to offer an amendment to resolution number 220427. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly second. Thank you. It has been moved in properly second that the amendment to resolution number 220427 be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution has been amended. This chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gill for motion on the amended resolution.
Thank you so much, Council President. It's been an honor to call Phil Yu a friend, as well as somebody who has his pulse on the finger of all things cultural, activist, you know, the latest movies, art, culinary, you know, advances in Asian America are often featured on his go-to website Angry Asian Man, which has been in operation for more than 20 years. It's amazing to watch him not only see his work achieve significant cultural impact and significance across generations, but to actually win a Peabody, to be a place where people have engaged and where the internet, as difficult as it may seem sometimes, can be a place of community as well. Phil and his co-author Jeff Yang will be in Philadelphia as guests of the Office of Immigrant Affairs and the Mayor's Commission on Asian-Americans next week, and certainly welcome all of my council colleagues to join in. We'll be happy to present this resolution to Phil Yu, but most importantly, you know, to really celebrate somebody who's dedicated a lot to raising up artistry and culture here in the, not only from Philadelphia, but especially across the country. So with that, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in second that the resolution be amended, as amended, I'm sorry, be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number 220428.
A resolution celebrating Joel Envy as MVP Most Valuable Philadelphia.
Let the record reflect, this resolution was introduced prior to the conclusion of the season for the Philadelphia 76ers. But the chair recognizes Councilman Jones for a motion on the resolution. Councilman, you're on mute. Councilman, you got it.
Thank you, Mr. President. In spite of the results of the tournament, I enthusiastically move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second, hearty second, Councilman Jones.
It's been moved in properly second. All in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. A little levity never hurts. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number 220429.
A resolution also naming the 1500 block of Lombard Avenue where Wesley Way.
Chair, thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move that resolution number 220429 be withdrawn.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in second that the resolution number 220429 be withdrawn. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and resolution number 220429 has been withdrawn. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number 220430.
A resolution urging the United States Congress to pass the Judiciary Act of 2021 to restore the integrity of the United States Supreme Court by adding four new seats.
Chair again recognizing Councilman Johnson for a motion.
Thank you, Council President, and before I call on the adoption of this resolution, just want to just clarify how critically important our judiciary branch from the Supreme Court is just based upon the soon-to-be, if it is the case, based upon the leak regarding Roe versus Wade ruling. And so there is advocacy on a federal level to expand our seats on the Supreme Court, and this effort is also led in Congress by our local congressman, Congressman Brendan Boyle. And so I support those efforts, and hopefully, one day in the foreseeable future, at least while my two sons are growing up, we have a business that reflects the diversity, but most importantly, all the key issues that have an impact on all of our communities as a whole. And so I enthusiastically, enthusiastically move for the adoption of the resolution, Council President.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second. All in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed.
Oppose.
Mr. President, I enthusiastically vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that Councilman Brian O'Neill enthusiastically voted no.
Council President David O votes no.
Councilman David O is also a no vote. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number 220431.
Resolution calling upon the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to pass House Bill 140, the Parking Protected Bike Lane and Plaza Bill, to empower municipalities to buffer bike lanes with parking on state roads.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green for a motion.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Moved in properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number 220432.
A resolution recognizing May 15 through 2022 as the inaugural Multicultural Media Professionals Week in the city of Philadelphia.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. This week was the idea of a enterprising and enterprising media professional, Sophia Tucker, who's done a lot of work in this city. And the idea was to bring together various media professionals of all different ethnic backgrounds together to collaborate, to have opportunities to network among each other, and to bring more young people and advance themselves within the profession. I'm glad that she took this initiative. She started the idea in 2018. Of course, was delayed by the pandemic, but we were able to have this inaugural week this week. Number of different partners have been active in this initiative this week, including Philadelphia Association of Black Journalists. I want to thank Ms. Tucker for her creativity for this initiative, and I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 220433.
A resolution applauding Philadelphia's election as a participant city in the Municipalities Reimagining Community Safety Initiative.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. This new initiative, the Municipalities Reimagining Community Safety Initiative, is a new program from the National League of Cities. Very proud to represent our city as an executive committee member and board member at the National League of Cities. And through this initiative, they selected five cities, Philadelphia being one, along with Baltimore, Dallas, Jackson, and St. Louis, and partnered with the Wells Fargo Foundation to provide resources to these cities as we are all grappling with the real crisis that we have, which is a crisis around this country dealing with public safety. I already reached out to our president, the National League of Cities, Clarence Anthony, our president and CEO, as well as our board president, Mayor Vince Williams of Union City, Georgia, to thank him on behalf of, both of them on behalf of the city of Philadelphia for providing us with critical dollars as we try to address the issues of gun violence and public safety in our city. Very appreciative of also the resources being provided by Wells Fargo. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 220434.
A resolution honoring the life and legacy of the Honorable Norman Y. Mineta, who passed away on May 3, 2022 during Asian-American Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, would you please read the title of resolution number 220435.
A resolution designating May 15, 2022, as the inaugural Day of Serenity in the city of Philadelphia, providing communities disproportionately impacted by gun violence the opportunity to gather in peace and healing.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gaultier.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number 210685AA.
An ordinance amending Subcode A, the Philadelphia Administrative Code of Title IV, the Philadelphia Building Construction and Occupancy Code of the Philadelphia Code, by amending Section 8703, entitled Special Certificate of Inspection, to enhance building safety requirements for educational occupancies.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to give members of the council a little brief reminder of the history of this legislation. Back in 2019, we learned that a long-term, longtime teacher, Meredith Jackson, was, Meredith Jackson's schools, excuse me, was diagnosed with mesothelioma, which pretty much believed came from her providing education to young people at those schools. At that time, we worked on this bill and introduced the legislation, was about to introduce the legislation, but the school district said, give us some time as we try to address asbestos in our schools. So giving them the benefit of that, I held back on the legislation, thinking that asbestos would be remediated over a period of time and be done quickly, especially as we went into the pandemic, when we know the schools were closed, and it was under the impression I was receiving that they were working very hard to address those issues. Although they made some improvement, much more work needs to be done in reference to asbestos. And then as we came back into our council session in 2021, and prior to that, as the schools are reopening, and my son was going back to school, like a number of other children around the city of Philadelphia, we learned that the asbestos issue was still a very significant problem in our schools. We all saw the issues, and many of us participated in the press conferences at Masterman and also SLA Bieber, where parents, teachers, other school district employees, and children were very concerned to be in our schools. So working with the Health Department, we've been able to make amendments to this legislation to require that before a special certificate of occupancy can be issued for an education building in the city of Philadelphia, the Health Department must inspect in reference to asbestos. And this follows the legislation that Councilmember Squillen and us as a body supported dealing with lead. It also brings together an advisory committee to provide guidance to the manager-directors' office about issues and concerns regarding the safety and the building conditions of our schools. So this was a collaborative approach and process where we worked with both Philadelphia Federation of Teachers, the Pennsylvania Chapter of American Federation of Teachers, as well as SEIU, our school administrators, Casa Local 502, Philadelphia Home and School Council, and the Philadelphia School Advisory Council, as well as other parents and concerned individuals around the city of Philadelphia about the issue of asbestos in our schools. My hope is with the new superintendent, Dr. Tony Wildington, will have a new approach as we work through these issues and do all that we can to remove asbestos from our schools to make sure that everyone who works, who's educated, who comes into our schools are doing it in a safe environment and place going forward. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kenone Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
All right, ayes are 16, ayes are 0. Majority of all members having voted in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 210802.
An ordinance amending Section 121120 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Abandoned Vehicles to authorize public safety officers to authorize the removal of abandoned vehicles.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll. Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Sorry, I missed something. I was looking in the chat. Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kenone Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. Um, Councilman O'Neil, on my, on my computer, it was a little...
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I have you, yeah.
I voted aye.
Aye, okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
A little static in my computer. Thank you. Ayes are 16, ayes are 0. Majority of all members having voted in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolution?
I do, Mr. President. A resolution adopting the 2022 Hazard Mitigation Plan is the official hazard mitigation plan of the city of Philadelphia, introduced today by Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. On your behalf, I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Moved in properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and let the record reflect, this is an administration bill. In the event anyone needs to be briefed on these specifics, we will arrange to have that set up from the administration. Thank you. Mr. Decker.
There are no resolutions, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And that concludes our calendar for today. We will, excuse me, now move to recognizing members for speeches, but prior to that, just going to note for the record that we'll be using a chat feature available on Microsoft's Teams to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized in order to comply with the Sunshine Act. The chat feature must only be used for that particular purpose. But that said, are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? And the chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. I have two items to talk about. One is a wonderful item, and one is a terrible item. I'll start with the terrible item. It almost goes unnoticed as a sign of the times here in Philadelphia that on May 14 in Buffalo, a person drove 200 miles to put on a livestream the murder of 10 people and, and, and the shooting of three others, 11 African-American. This person specifically drove to this black neighborhood to shoot people in the parking lot and in the supermarket. It's a very sick and tragic sign of what is going on, but even worse, that we have so many murders in our city that it's almost uneventful, and it should not be. um, uneventful and, and it should not be. Um, I just want to express our thoughts and prayers for those survivors, condolences to the families, the communities. It's, it's devastating and particularly for those who have not, uh, experienced the levels of violence that, that some of us have in this nation, particularly here in our city. Um, the other event that I want to mention, which is the exact opposite, and, and part of the solution to these problems is that here in Philadelphia today, uh, um, Black Enterprise is holding its eleventh annual Entrepreneurial, um, Summit, Entrepreneur Summit. And I had the pleasure and the honor along with council members Cindy Bass and Derek Green to present um, our council resolution this morning to the president and CEO Earl Butch Graves Jr., um, a wonderful event. They started in Philadelphia, they're back here in Philadelphia. Um, entrepreneurism, owning businesses, having ability to, to put your personality and, and to direct, um, in your way, what you want to do in life is, is one of the wonderful things, uh, that I believe will not only help our communities, um, turn around, um, the problems we have, but address a lot of the ills such as gun violence, murder, and a lack of just respect for human life. I think that, um, you know, we all celebrate, um, uh, the B E Entrepreneur Summit, and I know many of us are going to go over there, you know, throughout the, uh, throughout the event. And I want to congratulate them and just tell them how much we appreciate them here in our city of Philadelphia. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. On behalf of the majority, Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I, um, first of all, want to, uh, echo the sentiments of my colleague as it relates to some of the concerns dealing with the shooting this past week. Extremely sad situation that captured the heart of a lot of people across this country, across the world, really. And there's multiple shootings over the weekend and really sad situation. But, um, this week in Philadelphia, we had, um, on the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, we had a primary election. And the voter turnout for that election hovered around twenty percent. We're still counting some mail-in ballots and looking at the numbers, but the concern um, that only twenty percent of the, uh, registered voters here in the city of Philadelphia came out to vote this week when we have, um, contested elections, important elections, to me is alarming. Um, we have, uh, an important general election next year. We have an important race, I'm sorry, important general election in November. We have important elections next year. And of course, in two thousand twenty-four, we vote for president. And so one of the things that I've been fighting for is, uh, more investment in a commissioner's office. The, the, the mayor allocated twenty-two million dollars in his budget proposal when the commissioners asked for twenty-seven. But we all know that it would take thirty-six million dollars to fairly fund an election in the way that we've seen in two thousand twenty, where people came out to vote in record numbers. So, um, I am concerned about the voter turnout. I do think that we all need to own some of this on our own. We're, we're going to, uh, push and promote the election this November, but I also think that we need to do a better job of allocating funds to the commissioner's office. So I just want to raise awareness to the letter that we sent out to the administration as well as to our state partners, asking for, uh, more money and more funding to fund a fair election. Um, the last thing I'm going to say, um, you know, I, I, um, yesterday, spent a lot of ti- Tuesday, I spent a lot of time on the polling place and, um, I remember coming across, uh, one woman who really touched my heart. I watched a lot of seniors, um, walking to the polling places with canes and, um, you know, do everything that came to vote. But one woman in specific, you know, she was upset at us on the city council side. So she caught my attention, right? You know, what's going on? Talk to me, tell me how, how you feeling? And before she got a chance to talk to me, um, she needed to sit down because her legs were giving out and she was, she was tired. Um, so, you know, I was, you know, can I walk you to your car? Can I help you out? Conversation immediately shifted. I got an opportunity to talk to the woman for about twenty minutes. And, um, she is, um, you know, almost had me in tears because she was asking me, when do I come up for election next year? And I said, next year. And she said, well, I might not be here to vote for you. And so I'm like, well, you know, what's wrong? What's going on? And she explained to me, you know, what she had been going through, and I'm not going to put her business out there. Um, but she talked about her terminal illness. And in the midst of, you know, talking about her terminal illness, she still found a way to come out and vote. Right? Like, fa- literally facing death, might not be here to vote in November, but still wanted to come out and vote, a little mad at us, right? And that's part of the job. That's what we signed up for. Um, and I still don't know why, but, you know, it really, you know, I will never forget that woman. I'll never forget the fact that, you know, in the midst of facing death, she felt like it was her obligation to come out and vote, while so many of us, um, have the choice and the time and choose not to do so for a lot of reasons. So I know I'm going to do my part um, to try to raise awareness for this November's election, but I will never forget her. And I'm hoping that her story inspires somebody else, uh, to participate in an election where they might not necessarily want to come out and vote. Uh, I'll also close out with something similar to what Councilman Johnson says all the time when he starts our hearings, I mean, starts our council meetings, um, praying for those who have been victims of gun violence. We've, we've had some tragic, tragic, tragic deaths in the city of Philadelphia over the last couple of weeks, some young people, innocent victims, um, being caught in a crossfire of gun violence. And, you know, I just want to, um, echo my colleague, Councilman Johnson, who always offers prayers and condolences to the, uh, to the folks that we're losing in this city. And I look forward to continuing to work with my colleagues to be able to address this issue. Sorry for being long-winded, folks, but thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, sad, um, compelling, but encouraging, um, message that you just gave us about that lady. Um, this is real, you know? So thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Um, thank you, Councilmember Thomas, for your comments. Um, definitely was good to hear, appreciated, um, that perspective. It reminds us of the work that we need to do every day. I also want to thank, um, Councilmember O uh, for his comments. Um, as president of Democratic officials, I had a chance to talk with Buffalo Mayor Byron Brown and his offer, um, support. I can only, can't even imagine, um, the challenges he's dealing with and trying to lead his city, um, dealing with that horrific, uh, situation that happened in Buffalo, um, when we're dealing with all the issues of the pandemic, A P D and economic development and all the challenges that we're dealing with. And add to that, uh, a mass shooting targeting, um, African-Americans in his city. Um, so definitely thank you, Councilmember O, for, um, raising that point, um, this morning. Also want to thank Councilmember O for allowing me to participate with him in the presentation for the Black Enterprise Resolution. As someone who grew up reading Black Enterprise in my household, it was a real honor just to be there um, and to present that resolution along with Councilmember Cindy Bass. So I want to thank you, Councilmember O, for reaching out and giving me the opportunity to be with you as we present, uh, presented that resolution this morning. Uh, two other quick matters. One, I want to remind people that, uh, my office is hosting a blood drive today uh, with American Red Cross, and this is a blood drive to support, um, those who are, um, dealing with, um, sickle cell anemia disease. I know Councilmember, uh, Squilla has been a strong, um, blood donor and supporter of blood drives, um, through the many years in his office. And I know Councilman Gimm has been a very strong supporter of, uh, sickle cell issues as well as, well as all members of the city council. Uh, so that will be today from eleven A M. to four P M., Conversation Hall, room two oh one. Uh, for those who are frequent donors like myself, make sure you do your Fast Pass so you can give, um, blood today, which I'll be doing a little bit later today. And then to close on a, a very positive note, um, tomorrow will be the two thousand twenty-two Philadelphia Association Black Journalists, uh, Media Professional Awards. And I'd like to congratulate my Director of Communications, Kyra Harris. I was receiving an award as an emerging, emerging media professional honoree. So I want to thank, uh, her for all the great work that she does uh, in helping to uplift our office and to get the word out about the things that we do all around the city of Philadelphia. So I congratulate, um, Kyra Harris on receiving that award. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you. And congratulations from all of us. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of brief, um, remarks. First, I want to congratulate, uh, now she's the former CEO of the Philadelphia National Airport, that Shelley Cameron, who has now, uh, transitioned over to the greater Philadelphia Chamber of Commerce, where she will be, um, the CEO. Um, Shelley worked at the airport over the last, um, eleven years as the CEO, and we had a good , uh, working relationship as it relates to moving the Philadelphia International Airport, um, forward. So just want to congratulate her and wish her on the best in her new, um, position and, and, her new position, um, in terms of her career. Also, Council President and colleagues, um, similar to Councilman Isaiah Thomas, on E-Day, I was out and about and, um, I like to say smelling my district and talking to the residents and moving all throughout, um, the second council medic district and just talking to, um, the voters. And two key issues, um, that was very resilient and consistent in talking to my constituents were, one, um, making sure that we keep the pulse of addressing, um, the sisters' gun violence that is continuously , um, taking over our city, um, making sure that we're providing positive outlets for our young people. So they don't pick up guns during this upcoming summer, and making sure as the weather breaks, we're doing everything that we can do possible um, to keep our residents safe. And so I will be, as we move forward, you know, making sure that I'm engaging um, with, uh, Philadelphia Police Commissioner Dayon Outlaw, our district attorney, um, like Krasner, our new, um, school, um, superintendent who will be joining us here in the city of Philadelphia, as well as um, probation, parole, um, in our court system, just to make sure that we have a comprehensive strategy and approach around this issue. Um, and we'll be reaching out my colleagues also for support, particularly around this particular issue, because we don't want to have another summer on a trajectory where we're going to surpass six hundred homicides here in the city of Philadelphia. Um, a, a good note is that, uh, we're slightly under when it comes to homicides this year. At least nine percent, um, less homicides this year than we had last year, but we're up in shootings. So you have a lot more individuals who are getting shot, um, and that doesn't even take in consideration those individuals who are paralyzed, those individuals who are named as a result of the shootings, but also the shell shock that has an impact on the communities in which we live in. And the second key issue, Council President and colleagues, um, is the issue of property assessments and the taxes that are going to have a significant impact on those individuals and neighborhoods that have seen property values significantly increasing. So as we move forward, um, just making sure, um, in this budgetary process that we're doing all the things possible to get a level of tax relief, um, to our residents, engaging them and making sure that they're, they're participating in first level of reviews, uh, and making sure that they're taking advantage of all the tax relief measures that are available that we offer here in the city of Philadelphia. And also us not turning a blind eye or paying attention to the eviction crisis that is also surely going to take place, uh, when we see um, these property values increase, when a landlord property values increase and his taxes increase, and he's going to pass that cost down to the tenant. If the tenant can't afford their rent, those will also be individuals who will be left homeless, trying to figure out a way, uh, where they, where they were actually laid their head to sleep. And so, um, those two key things um, were very, very consistent, um, on election day, um, going all throughout the second council medic district. And I'll make sure that um, those key issues I will be addressing with my colleagues here in the city of Philadelphia. Um, I just wanted to put that out there just for the record. Um, my staff just wants me to clarify that, um, although, um, Shelley hasn't resigned just yet, um, she's still put out on information that she will be moving along to a new position with the Chamber of Commerce. Just want to clarify that she will still be working with us until June twenty-fourth, but nevertheless, that's just a month away, which means there will be new leadership at the Philadelphia International Airport. So, um, as always, it's good to see everyone. Thank you, Council President, for your time.
Thank, thank you, Councilman. I hate to keep making little comments after the, the speeches. I know, I know I'm not supposed to talk. But you, you referenced election day, and I got to tell you, on election day, standing at thirty fifth Oxford with my chief of staff, Curtis Wilkerson, two o'clock in the afternoon, approximately thirty shots rang out. Must have been no more than a block or two away. The thing that concerned me that the people just continue to walk and talk and it was like nothing happened, right? And the gentleman said, "Daryl, that happens every day," you know, "and that's what you're dealing with, you know? It's just so frequent. It's just sad and scary." So I concur, Councilman. We got to do something, something different.
And it shouldn't, it shouldn't be normal.
Yeah, you know, it's just ridiculous. Uh, thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to echo my colleagues' comments about last Tuesday, election day. I first want to start with former city commissioner Anthony Clark passed away. Um, he was a public servant. He was a proud North Philadelphian, and he fought for our democracy. During, um, my travels on election day, saw a lot of my colleagues, uh, in different parts of the city. But what I noticed was the fact that the resources we need to keep and dedicate to the city commissioner's office is the blue line, red line, the line of our democracy. Most of our machine operators, our inspection, uh, posts that we have inside the polling place, we're finding a part-time filling those positions. Without those machine operators and judges of election, there is no polling place. Um, in some parts of Philadelphia, the boxes, the election boxes that are supposed to be delivered to the respective polling places weren't picked up. A lot of our, um, workers are getting up in age. We have to train, recruit, and educate younger people to be a part of the Democratic and Republican parties so that we can have proper elections run in Philadelphia. Um, I just know that as we move towards, uh, the midterms, November, we have to solve these problems, where fingers will be pointed at us, blaming us for things that may not even exist. So we have to do our part to make sure the machinery of our democracy is well-oiled and well-staffed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, I think that concludes our speeches. Oh, I see the Councilman Dom. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. And I just want a quick comment. Last night I had an opportunity to do a ride-along in your district, I believe, Council President, twenty-second district, and, uh, met with the captain, several people there. And they're doing a really good job. The captain has that program. I know that we, uh, through you, I think we've supported that. Guns down, gloves up, great program with young kids out there, teaching boxing and different skills. It's great. But I was in the, uh, front, I guess the front seat of the police car from six to ten last night and actually witnessed seven different shootings, um. Five of them were on Bouvier Street. And when we got there, the police were actually chasing, um, the shooters in the car. And, um, you know, we stopped, got out and saw what's going on. And it's just, uh, heartbreaking to see this. And most of these things, I believe, are totally around trucks. That's really where a lot of this is coming from, drug-related crimes. So we really need to, to work with not just our local partners that I know are doing as much as we can, but we need to engage some of these federal partners to help us with this drug situation. But I will say the police department, from my observation, did an incredibly great job. They were really professional. Uh, so many police officers out there just doing really good work. So just wanted to commend them and, uh, just share that experience. It was, uh, sad to see. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Councilman, I heard last night you went on a ride-along. I was praying for you that you stayed safe, yeah. Um, with that, uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two at ten A M.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved a second to council stand adjourned until Thursday, May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, ten A M. All the favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. And again, please be safe. Love you guys. Love you guys.